Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, please place all electronic devices, all electronic devices to vibrate. Quiet on the floor, please. Madam Majority Leader, it's all yours.
Good afternoon and welcome to the stated meeting of December 19th, 2024. I am Majority Leader Amanda Farias, and I'd like to thank you for joining us. If you would like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on our website. On behalf of the body, I welcome the members of the public who have joined us here today. During stated meetings, only members of the council may speak. Members of the public shall remain silent. If you wish to express your support for any remarks, you may make the silent approval gesture. I want to remind my colleagues that decorum is to be respected at all times. Insulting each other is not appropriate. All remarks are to be addressed to the chair, and members shall not speak unless recognized by the chair. It is essential that even if we disagree, we treat each other with respect.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Roll call.
Abreu.
Present.
Ariola.
Present.
Aviles.
Present.
Ayala.
Here.
Banks.
Present.
Botcher.
Present.
Brannon.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers.
Present.
Kabon.
Present.
Carr. De La Rosa. Dinowitz.
Here.
Felice. Gennaro.
Here.
Gutierrez. Hanif.
Here.
Hanks.
Present.
Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Present.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Mar Marado.
Present.
Marte.
Present.
Mealy.
Here.
Menon.
Here.
Moya. Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse. Osay.
Present.
Palladino.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Wrestler.
Here.
Riley.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Salam.
Present.
Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez.
Present.
Shulman.
Here.
Ung.
Present.
Stevens.
Here.
Thank you. Vernikoff. Williams.
Present.
One.
Here.
Jaeger.
Here.
Juang.
Present.
Morelli. Thank you. Farias.
Present.
Speaker Adams.
Present.
Thank you. We will now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Rabbi Yaakov Berman, founder of the Jewish Future Alliance and Liaison for Shabbat Headquarters, located at 824 Eastern Parkway in Brooklyn.
Thank you, Majority Leader, Speaker Adams, and of course, my good friend and councilman from Crown Heights, Crystal Hudson, for this honor. Mi Shabirach Abotenu, master of the universe, who created the world with boundless blessings. Empower us to see and embrace all that is good and beautiful in New York City. Bless us to honor the dignity of difference in this global city of remarkable diversity. Grant us the courage to celebrate our individuality and heritage without fear, staying true to our values while respecting one another, so that we may recognize that those not made in our image are nonetheless made in your image. At this pivotal moment in history, guide the leaders of this city to honor you by first honoring one another. Through acts of collaboration, may we transform opponents into allies and become your family on earth, as you are our parent in heaven. As my teacher, the Saint of Lubavitch Rebbe would say, "We are one people living in one city, under one administration, and under one God." Beloved God, bless the members of New York City Council with kindness and strength. May they govern this great city with wisdom, justice, grace, and compassion, honoring your name and bringing your blessing to New York City. Thank you.
I will now ask Councilmember Crystal Hudson to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you, Majority Leader Farias. I'm honored to welcome Rabbi Yaakov Berman to council chambers today. I move for unanimous consent to spread the invocation in full upon the record. I invited Rabbi Berman to deliver today's invocation in commemoration of the street code naming we're approving today to rename President Street between Brooklyn and New York avenues as Lubavitch Rebbe Way. Rabbi Menachem Mendel Schneerson, known as the Lubavitch Rebbe, was the seventh leader of the Chabad Lubavitch movement and one of the most transformative figures in modern Jewish history. After escaping the Holocaust and arriving in the United States in 1941, the Rebbe's leadership expanded Chabad Lubavitch's global reach, establishing countless institutions, kindergarten schools, drug rehabilitation centers, care homes, and synagogues. Central to the Rebbe's teachings was an unwavering emphasis on acts of goodness and kindness. His ability to meet people where they were, engaging them with warmth and heartfelt communication regardless of their background or status, set him apart. Here's a story about the Rebbe that I hold dear, one that embodies not only his enduring legacy but also the very spirit of Brooklyn. In 1968, Shirley Chisholm became the first Black woman elected to the United States Congress. She was assigned to the Agriculture Committee, an assignment intended to sideline her influence. Chisholm was disheartened. Besides, what does someone from Brooklyn know about agriculture? At this moment, the Rebbe reached out to meet with her. Chisholm shared her frustrations and her desire to serve her communities underserved. The Rebbe, seeing an opportunity where others saw a setback, encouraged her to use the committee to address America's surplus of food while feeding the hungry. Inspired by this conversation, Shirley Chisholm championed legislation that led to the federal Food Stamp Program, an initiative that continues to feed millions of Americans to this day. It is stories like this that remind us of the Rebbe's profound ability to inspire action, build bridges, and help others see the potential for good in every challenge. I'm proud to represent a district that is home to the worldwide Chabad Lubavitch headquarters and is now home to Lubavitch Rebbe Way. Thank you, Rabbi Yaakov Berman, for your guidance, advocacy, and assistance in making this honor a reality.
We will now have the adoption of minutes by Councilmember Chiose.
I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meetings of December 5th, 2024, be adopted as printed.
Messages and papers from the mayor?
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices?
M-84 and M-85, Commissioner of Elections appointments?
Received, ordered, printed, and filed.
Positions and communications?
None.
Land use call-ups?
None.
Thank you. We will now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. Before we begin, I do want to acknowledge the loss of several New Yorkers who died while on the job earlier this month. Frankly, Duran, a restaurant worker, was fatally shot at his shift in Councilmember Nurses' district. We also lost Jose Ramirez, a construction worker who was killed in an equipment accident in Councilmember Powers' district. Our city is also mourning the tragic deaths of five New Yorkers to fatal fires, including incidents in the districts of Councilmembers Lee, Brewer, Banks, Moya, and Botcher. My thoughts are with their families and their loved ones during this very difficult time. December 16th was Bangladesh Victory Day, which commemorates the independence of Bangladesh and the enduring fight for freedom. On this day, we honor the history, culture, and contributions of our Bangladeshi communities. I hope everyone had a meaningful Bangladesh Victory Day. Next, please join me in wishing a very happy early birthday to Councilmember Carmen De La Rosa. Is she in? Is she in? Is she in? She's a Christmas baby, everybody. Happy early birthday. And since we're mentioning babies, I just want to mention that since we last met, we are aunties and uncles to two more babies. So we give a round of applause to Baby Sanchez and Baby Gutierrez. More babies, more babies, more babies. Before we continue, colleagues, please join me in saying farewell to our colleague, Councilmember Kalman Jaeger, as he heads to his next chapter in the New York State Assembly. We're grateful for your contributions. Councilmember Jaeger, you and I came in this thing together. I wish you well, and I thank you for your contributions to the city on behalf of all New Yorkers. Congratulations. Finally, as this is the last stated meeting of 2024, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the impact of the council's work this year to make a difference in the lives of New Yorkers. We have remained laser-focused on the work of the people in our city, consistently delivering results for working-class New Yorkers. We advanced a legislative package to address the disparities in maternal health outcomes by increasing maternal mental health services to confront a major driver of maternal mortality. We launched a first-of-its-kind guaranteed income program for expectant mothers to improve maternal health and reduce child poverty. We reduced unnecessary regulations and fines for small businesses and updated the city's outdated commercial zoning regulations to support economic growth and opportunities for small businesses, the industrial sector, and growing industries to create and sustain jobs for New Yorkers. This council fought together with the people of our city against budget cuts to essential services, restoring funding for full library service, cultural institutions, and to chart a path forward that improves early childhood education for the city's families. Through these efforts, the CUNY Reconnect Program that we launched two years ago hit the milestone of re-enrolling 40,000 former working-age students in college to access new opportunities for career advancement. To ensure that New Yorkers can access opportunities across our city, we expanded Fair Fairs to reach even more low-income New Yorkers. We advanced holistic solutions to public safety by increasing police transparency and accountability while expanding services for underserved victims of crime. This city council established and opened our state's first trauma recovery centers that helps survivors of violence access the help to recover that stops cycles of crime and trauma in communities. And over the last month, we have delivered historic solutions to make housing in our city more affordable to working-class New Yorkers. First, we passed the Fair Act to prevent residents seeking apartments from being forced to unfairly pay fees for brokers they did not request that are serving landlords' interests. Then, we passed zoning reforms with $5 billion secured for our City for All Housing Plan to advance more housing, greater affordability, and infrastructure investments. This was one of the most significant advancements of housing solutions in New York City history, paving the way for 82,000 new homes over the next 15 years and billions of dollars to address housing and infrastructure issues within our communities. The accomplishments of this council throughout this year are way too numerous to list, and our body has united as a pillar of city governance that is committed to delivering results for New Yorkers. Thank you, colleagues. And while there is more work ahead of us, I'm proud, just like my colleague Narcisse. I'm proud of the foundation for success that we have built, the impact it will have on future generations of New Yorkers, and the continued work that we have started and we will build upon. Thank you, colleagues, for your hard work to create a stronger, more equitable city for all. And as we continue to celebrate the holiday season, I hope everyone has a happy Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, or any holiday that you celebrate with your family and your loved ones. And I wish you all a very, very happy, healthy New Year. Before we move on to our stated agenda, I would like to acknowledge that we are joined by my former colleague Jimmy Van Bremer and his family today. We are also joined by the family member of Councilmember Yusuf Salam. Welcome to the People's House. Now, let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following land use items. Kingsbridge Armory, ESDC grant, a request for the council's support for the allocation of up to $2 million in capital funds from the Restore New York Communities Program, administered by the Empire State Development Corporation to help facilitate the future renovation and adaptive reuse of the landmark Kingsbridge Armory
Quiet on the floor, please.
in Councilmember Sanchez's district. Next, we'll vote on the following finance items. A pre-considered resolution to appropriate new city revenues in fiscal year 2025 and implement revenue budget changes reflected in the city's November financial plan. Introduction 1090A, sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon, would authorize nine existing business improvement districts throughout the city to increase the amount they can expend annually. Introduction 1098, sponsored by Councilmember Keith Powers, would authorize an increase in the amount the Madison Avenue Business Improvement District can expend annually. A pre-considered resolution to approve a 40-year full exemption from real property taxes for 45th Street Partners, a four-building portfolio with 80 residential units located in Councilmember Botcher's district. A pre-considered resolution to approve a 40-year full exemption from real property taxes for the perennial, which will consist of the adaptive reuse of a former hospital building resulting in a 145-unit affordable senior building in Councilmember Shulman's district. A pre-considered resolution to approve a 40-year partial exemption from real property taxes for 3044 Albany Crescent, a five-story building with 36 rent-stabilized residential units located in Councilmember Sanchez's district. A pre-considered resolution to approve a 40-year full exemption from real property taxes for 73 Loy Sida, a housing development fund corporation that comprises a multifamily building in Councilmember Rivera's district. And a pre-considered resolution to approve a 40-year partial exemption from real property taxes for Crotone 7, a project that consists of 155-unit building in Councilmember Salamanca's district. Today, we will also vote on the following pieces of legislation. Resolution 11, sponsored by Councilmember Crystal Hudson, would call on the United States Congress to pass and the president to sign the National Infrastructure Bank Act of 2023. We thank our staff member Nick Connell. Resolution 227, sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, would call on the Congress to pass and the president to sign a renewed farm bill that increases funding for life-saving food aid. We thank our staff member Nina Rosenberg. A pre-considered introduction, sponsored by Councilmember Shaker Krishnan, to co-name 109 thoroughfares in public spaces based on requests of communities and council members whose districts where they are located. We thank our staff members Patrick Mulvihill and Christopher Sartori. Introduction 103A, sponsored by Councilmember Joanne Ariola, would require the Department of Transportation to notify affected council members 10 days prior to the removal of parking spaces that will be repurposed for a street-level bicycle corral requested by a local business, a car-share program, or a bike-share program. We thank our staff members Mark Chen, Kevin Kautowski, John Basile, and Connor Mealy. Introduction 104A, also sponsored by Councilmember Ariola, would require the Department of Transportation to consult with the fire department before approving open street applications and retain certain bicycle lane projects, which is already required for major transportation projects. FDNY would also be required to confer with affected local firehouses to ensure DOT has key information when implementing such projects. This can help ensure those projects do not impede local emergency responses. We thank our staff members Mark Chen, Kevin Kautowski, John Basile, and Connor Mealy. Introduction 1111A, sponsored by Councilmember Lynn Shulman, would change the frequency with which the Campaign Finance Board recalculates contribution and expenditure limits to account for changes in the Consumer Price Index. The board would recalculate contribution and expenditure limits once every local general election instead of every four years to account for two-year terms that occur every 20 years. We thank our staff members Jaiostery Godapathy, Erica Cohen, and David Seitzer. Introduction 532A, sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon, would expand a local program established by Local Lord II of 2016 where non-public schools can seek reimbursement from the city for costs related to employing security guards. Thank you to our staff members Rachel Cardero and Josh Kingsley. Resolution 576, sponsored by Majority Leader Amanda Farias, would call on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation amending the tax law to authorize the city of New York to offer a tax credit for businesses to incentivize the creation of workforce development and training programs for newly arrived immigrants. We thank our staff member Rebecca Barila. Resolution 521, also sponsored by Majority Leader Farias, would call on the United States Department of Labor to expand the number of Occupational Safety and Health Administration, or OSHA, authorized outreach trainers in New York City's 10 designated languages. Thank you to our staff member Elizabeth Arts. Resolution 460A, sponsored by Councilmember Crystal Hudson, would call on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign the Empire State Licensing Act, which provides all New Yorkers with access to professional, occupational, commercial, or business licenses, permits, certificates, or related registrations, regardless of an applicant's citizenship or immigration status. We thank our staff member Rebecca Barila. Resolution 522, sponsored by Councilmember Julie Menon, would call on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign the Good Jobs Guarantee Act, which would establish certain workforce training programs and increase employment opportunities for New Yorkers. We thank our staff member once again Elizabeth Arts. And Introduction 265A, sponsored by Councilmember Rita Joseph, would require city agencies to make their best possible efforts to expedite administrative processes related to providing continuing city-administered health insurance coverage when an employee transfers from one agency to another. The bill would also require agencies to provide detailed information regarding accessing city-administered benefits when an employee begins work. We thank again our staff member Elizabeth Arts and Rye Agusawara. Thank you for your attention, colleagues. I turn it back over to our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We will now move into discussion of general orders, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Hanks, followed by Brewer.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I am both deeply moved and proud to see City Hall featuring the display that honors the extraordinary legacy of the Black Angels, Black nurses who broke barriers and risked their lives to care for patients and conduct clinical trials that cured tuberculosis. These courageous women carried out their groundbreaking work in Staten Island at Seaview Hospital, where their dedication saved countless lives and left an indelible mark on the nursing profession. This display is part of the Staten Island Museum's powerful exhibition, Taking Care: The Black Angels of Seaview Hospital, which celebrates their lives, work, and enduring impact of these trailblazing women. Seeing stories showcased at City Hall provides a profound reminder of the rich Black history rooted in Staten Island and the invaluable contributions of the Black community in our city. I want to thank Speaker Adrian Adams for her vision and partnership in ensuring this important piece of history is recognized and shared with more New Yorkers. This contribution between City Hall and Staten Island Museum exemplifies how we elevate the stories of unsung heroes. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Brewer, followed by Shulman, then Juang.
Thank you very much. I just want to thank those who support Resolution 227, which, as Speaker indicated, calls for a renewed farm bill, increasing funding for life-saving food aid. We know how many New Yorkers are experiencing food insecurity. We know that cuts to food security will increase the need for emergency food assistance at food banks and soup kitchens already have long lines. The last farm bill was written in 2018 and expired in September after a one-year extension, leaving the farmers in limbo. Speaker Mike Johnson unveiled a stopgap emergency spending on Tuesday. I hope it goes through. Mr. Trump is playing craziness. It includes $10 billion in aid to farmers, which is less than they hoped for. We need a real renewal. I want to thank the staff, my staff, Shula Warren and Cynthia Hornig, but also Joel Berg, Hunger-Free America, for your leadership in the fight against food insecurity. And I want to thank both Congressman Espiat and Commissioner Park for writing in the op-ed today in the Daily News, "A Better Farm Bill That Feeds Families." Absolutely correct. And also, Madam Speaker, also thank you for Club Houses. You funded those, the smaller ones, and people are so, so appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Just a reminder to members on the floor, we have six resolutions up today. If you're speaking on a resolution when I call you in general orders, you can then wait for the moment to speak on resolutions for one minute. No problem. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Shulman, followed by Juang, then Riley.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I want to ask my colleagues to please vote for Intro 1111, which, as the speaker indicated, changes the frequency with which the Campaign Finance Board recalculates contribution and expenditure limits when the city council first passed the Campaign Finance Act.
Please debauch me, please.
The provision that capped expenditures for council and citywide offices called for the cap to be increased every four years based on the Consumer Price Index. The four-year figure came from the fact that citywide and council offices have four-year terms as a general rule. However, the law did not account for an anomaly that occurs every 20 years in which members of the council serve two-year terms because of redistricting of council lines as a result of the U.S. Census. To rectify this issue and bring equity to council elections that occur within this rare circumstance, Intro 1111 changes the frequency with which the Campaign Finance Board recalculates contribution and expenditure limits to account for changes in the Consumer Price Index from once every four years to once every local election. I want to thank Speaker Adams and Chair Wrestler for their support of this bill to bring equity to city council elections. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Juang, followed by Kabon, then Aviles.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Majority Chair, thank you. I'm speaking in supporting the street code renaming bill I sponsored for Li Wang Mary Qingwei. Li Wang Mary Qing moved to Bensonhurst, Brooklyn in 1969 with her husband, Muomeng Qing, and their daughters. Actually, one of their daughter is here today, Susan Qing, probably sitting in the back. Susan. And also, they were one of the first Asian family to move into the neighborhood after purchased a laundromat. It's correct, laundromat, all the Chinese business. The Qing family even had to leave in their laundromat after they had a fire in their home. Yeah. It's also become home for the many Asian-American families moving into the neighborhood. At the time, there was no English as a second language class available for immigrants. So she taught herself the language and also practiced with neighbors and customers. As a result, the laundromat quickly become a community resource center. As other Asian family moved to the area, she became a neighborhood resource with many people asking for if she knows where the doctors, where the schools. Also, she helped the neighbors call the utility companies resolve all the issues. She even received award at her daughter's elementary school graduation from the local Lions Club.
I sponsored for Li Wang Mary Qingwei. Li Wang Mary Qing moved to Bensonhurst, Brooklyn in 1969 with her husband, Muomeng Qing, and their daughters. Actually, one of their daughters is here today, Susan Qing, probably sitting in the back. Susan. And also, they were one of the first Asian families to move into the neighborhood after purchasing a laundromat. It's correct, laundromat, all the Chinese business. The Qing family even had to leave in their laundromat after they had a fire in their home. Yeah. It's also become home for the many Asian-American families moving into the neighborhood. At the time, there was no English as a second language class available for immigrants. So she taught herself the language and also practiced with neighbors and customers. As a result, the laundromat quickly became a community resource center. As other Asian families moved to the area, she became a neighborhood resource with many people asking for if she knows where the doctors, where the schools. Also, she helped the neighbors call the utility companies resolve all the issues. She even received an award at her daughter's elementary school graduation from the local Lions Club for volunteering and assisting immigrant families. Her laundromat became a social service center for the community. As the first, after that, after her husband passed away, she continued the legacy, still helped more people. As the first Chinese-American person elected to represent Brooklyn in the City Council, Li Wang Mary Qing paved the way for me and so many other Chinese-American community members in the neighborhood. That's why I'm proud to sponsor this street co-renaming. And please vote yes. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Caban, followed by Aviles and Abreu.
Thank you. Welcome to former Councilmember and my friend Jimmy Van Bramer. Welcome, Kim, Debbie, and Dawn. I am so excited that today we have a street co-naming in honor of the legacy and life of the late Elizabeth Emily White Markham by establishing Elizabeth White Markham Way at the corner of 44th Street and 28th Avenue. Elizabeth, born in 1940 in Queens, was a dedicated community leader, activist, and mentor who called Astoria home for over 50 years. She raised her children, and lots of other children, including community leaders in our district, with resilience and commitment working in local supermarkets, advocating for workers' rights, volunteering in organizations like the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, a fierce advocate for LGBTQ+ rights. Elizabeth was the mother of longtime public servant, former Councilmember Jimmy Van Bramer. Again, welcome to you and your family. Glad that you all are here with us today. Elizabeth became a visible and vocal supporter of marriage equality, marching in pride parades and lobbying politicians. Elizabeth's legacy is one of the public service and unwavering love for her community and family. Astoria is stronger thanks to Elizabeth's contributions to our community. We are proud to honor her legacy, which serves as an example for the generations of Queens kids to come. So thank you, and thanks to my colleagues for supporting.
Recognizing Councilmember Aviles, followed by Abreu, then Juang.
Today, we are voting on three street co-namings in my district. The first is for Donna Maxwell, who was born and raised in Brooklyn on 17th Street and raised her family there as well. Over the years, her name became synonymous with 17th Street. Donna, having been impacted by cancer, founded the 17th Street Cancer Crusade. This annual event, which Donna planned and cooked for each year, raised significant money for the American Cancer Society through a large street fair that came to be an annual community event that all looked forward to. Donna put her heart into all her efforts and becoming a paraprofessional at her alma mater of PS 124 and later the president of the 72nd Precinct Council was deeply beloved and respected by her family and community. And in fact, I'd like to lift up Ms. Annette Hendrickson, who we also recently lost, whose last words to me were to make sure that we honored Donna. We are also voting on a renaming for Don Lee, who was a tireless advocate in fighting against anti-Asian hate and working towards justice for victims of hate crimes. Underlying his professional and activist endeavors was his leadership at Homecrest Community Services, a nonprofit organization serving immigrant seniors, their families, in South Brooklyn. Taking over from its founders, he served as the organization's board chair for over 20 years. I am so proud to see 70th Street and 15th Avenue be named after the great Don Lee. And finally, we are voting on renaming for St. Phillips Episcopal Church at the corner of 80th Street and 11th Avenue. Four generations, St. Phillips has been vital to the community, providing food drives, holiday meals, safe space, drug recovery programs, and more to at least three generations of Brooklynites. We are glad to have them in our district and look forward to their contributions being memorialized through this renaming. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Abreu, followed by Juang, then Osay.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Today, we dedicate street co-namings to two remarkable individuals whose lives embody compassion, service, and the pursuit of justice. Thich Nhat Hanh and Monty Callen. Thich Nhat Hanh, a global apostle of peace and mindfulness, left a lasting impact on our community and beyond. In the 1960s, he lived on West 109th Street while teaching at Union Theological Seminary in Columbia University. He gave lectures at local venues like Riverside Church and the Beacon Theater and stood alongside the Rev. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who later nominated him for the Nobel Peace Prize. His work continues to inspire generations to embrace peace and understanding. Monty Callen was a lifelong advocate for her community, a dedicated social worker, and a voice for workers' rights and universal healthcare. She fought hard to preserve low- and middle-income housing through the tenants' association at her Michelama complex. Her decades of service at Montefiore Medical Center and her leadership as a union delegate and community organizer made her a beloved figure in our district. Her legacy reminds us of the profound impact one can have by lifting up others. We are profoundly grateful to honor these extraordinary individuals here in our district. Their legacies inspire us to build a more compassionate and just society. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Juang, followed by Osay.
Thank you, Majority Leader. There are numerous co-namings that we're celebrating today, and I want to make sure they re-recognize my predecessor, Councilmember Jimmy Van Bramer's mother. We're co-naming her Ms. Elizabeth Betty Markham. She was known to have been the wind under the wings of Councilmember Jimmy Van Bramer, a force of love, acceptance, and justice all over Western Queens. As she passed away this past July, I'm so proud to see the co-naming by Councilmember Caban, since it is now in her district. That was previously in District 26, represented by me, and I am just so grateful. And I also want to recognize Chief Portius and Detective Cohen for stopping by to celebrate Detective Mary Foley's street co-naming, whose work and lifelong dedication for the residents of the 108th Precinct is historic and recognized. Thank you so much.
Recognizing Councilmember Osay.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I am thrilled to officially co-name three blocks in my district after Clara Hayes, Joseph Scooter Joe Willands, and Miriam Carter. Mrs. Hayes moved to New York City at the age of 18 with $28 in her pocket. After working many years at the Macon Hardware Store, she bought the business and the building with her husband from its original owners. She dedicated her life to serving her community with her hardware and variety store. She prepared and gave away meals for people in need for over 30 years and gave discounts to those who needed supplies from her store. She provided jobs to those who needed and also received rewards and citations for her community involvement. She is documented as maintaining one of the longest-running businesses owned by an African-American woman in Bed-Stuy. Scooter Joe served in the United States Marines and later joined the NYPD in 1966. His intimate involvement and knowledge of the neighborhood made him a tremendously effective officer in Bed-Stuy. He was well-known for his compassionate heart. He specialized in community-oriented policing long before they became institutionalized. He retired from the NYPD in 1986, but continued to stay embedded and actively involved in the Bed-Stuy community for the rest of his life. And finally, Miriam Carter founded the Drum and Bugle Corps, called the Carter Cadets, in her home in 1949, until her death in 1963. And four a decade after, the Carter Cadets played a critical role in the lives of many African-American youths in Brooklyn. They participated in numerous competitions and traveled to Washington, D.C. in 1961 to participate in Bayard Rustin's First March on Washington. Thank you, and congratulations to all the families.
Thank you. Seeing no one else signed up to speak. Report of special committees?
None.
Reports of standing committees?
Report of the Committee on Civil Service and Labor. Intro 265A, City Employee Benefits.
Amended and coupled on General Orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance. Intro 1090A, Business Improvement District Expenditures.
Amended and coupled on General Orders.
Intro 1098, Madison Avenue Bid.
Coupled on General Orders.
M-83 and Reso 700 Budget Modification.
Coupled on General Orders.
Pre-considered LU 200 and Reso 701 through pre-considered LU 204 and Reso 705 Tax Exemptions.
Coupled on General Orders.
Report of the Committee on Governmental Operations, State and Federal Legislation. Intro 1111A, Contribution and Expenditure Limits.
Amended and coupled on General Orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use. Pre-considered LU 205 and Reso 706, Kingsbridge Armory.
Coupled on General Orders.
Report of the Committee on Parks and Recreation. Pre-considered Intro 1153, Naming of 109 thoroughfares in public places.
Coupled on General Orders.
Report of the Committee on Public Safety. Intro 532A, School Security Guard Services.
Amended and coupled on General Orders.
Report of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure. Intros 103A and 104A, Street Parking Spaces and Open-Street Applications.
Amended and coupled on General Orders.
Resolution Appointing Various Persons Commissioner of Deeds.
Coupled on General Orders. I now ask that the Clerk take a roll-call vote on all of the items coupled on today's General Orders calendar.
Sanchez.
Permission to vote on all items on today's agenda?
Permission granted.
And permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Only the Kingsbridge Armory could bring me to the meeting today. Thank you, Speaker, for welcoming my child into the world and all my colleagues. Built in 1917, used over the years as a military hub, a concert space, food distribution hub during COVID-19, the Armory has been functionally vacant for 25 years. It's said to be one of the largest in the world. You could fit six football stadiums inside of the Kingsbridge Armory. It represents the vast potential of our community. And with EDC and a community working group, I led a nine-month community engagement process in 2023 that engaged more than 4,000 people and culminated in a community vision plan. Throughout this year, EDC has been reviewing responses to an RFP and is in the process of selecting a developer. Today's vote is a resolution to support EDC's pursuit of a $2 million grant from New York State, not a vote on any specific project or land use actions. Those will come to us. I hope colleagues will join me in support of this effort to make any future project financially sound. And while we do not yet know what the project will be, we do know that past projects failed because they did not have adequate financing. I remain committed to and welcome my colleagues' support to do everything possible to promote a successful redevelopment of the Kingsbridge Armory. Also, I made a new human, and did I mention she's amazing? With that, I vote aye on all, with the exception of 103A, on which I vote no. Thank you, Majority Leader.
Thank you, one moment. Brooks Powers.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Today, I'm proud to present, oops, excuse me. I just wanted to acknowledge the street co-namings today, that of Pat Simon, who was for a long time on the board for the Ocean Bay Community Development Corporation, a community leader and key stakeholder. And I'm so honored to be a sponsor and support of that co-naming for Beach 54th Street and Pat Simon Way in recognition of her life and her legacy. And also, I'd like to acknowledge that I am a co-prime sponsor on Intro 103 and 104. Intro 104 in particular came about from a visit with then-Commissioner Laura Kavanaugh to the big house in Far Rockaway, one of my firehouses. And we heard of concerns about their safety in getting to and from locations when they're not brought up to speed in terms of major changes, major projects. And so with that, I'd just like to say that I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Rivera.
Thank you so much, Madam Majority Leader. I just want to congratulate my colleagues on their legislation. And of course, for all the street co-namings, I have some fabulous ones coming up. I vote aye on all, except for Intro 103, on which I vote no. Thank you.
Abreu.
Aye.
Areola.
I vote aye on all, except for Intro 111A.
I vote aye on all, except for 532A and 103A.
Ayala.
I would aye.
Banks.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. The co-naming bill on today's agenda honors the lives of some of the brightest and most dedicated leaders of the 42nd Council District. I'm deeply honored to have worked with the families of Antonio Fields, Florence M. Hall, Gail Frederick. To pass this important legislation, these three exceptional individuals made a lasting impact on the people of neighborhoods of the 42nd Council District, and they are truly deserving of this recognition. Antonio, Florence, and Gail were more than just advocates. They were pillars of strength, fierce leaders, shining examples of what it means to serve others. Today's bill does more than rename streets in their honor. It reaffirms the values that they embody: dedication, service, and love for their community. In passing this bill, we renew our commitment to these values and ensure that their stories will continue to inspire and shape the future of our city. I'm proud to be a part of the City Council that celebrates the legacies of our community leaders and congratulates my colleagues for their dedicated work on their respective street namings across the city. To the families of Antonio, Florence, and Gail, thank you for sharing these incredible people with us. Their legacies will live on, and today we make sure that their names will never be forgotten. I'm especially proud to introduce this: Antonio Fields Way, Florence M. Hall Loop, and Gail Frederick Way. Thank you, and happy holidays to all my colleagues. Aye on all.
Thank you. Butcher.
Aye on all, with the exception of 103A and 104A, on which I'm a no.
Thank you. Brennan.
Aye.
Brewer.
Thank you. I do want to mention Linda Carter Cooper, whose sign will be at 84th and Amsterdam. Her husband spoke very movingly earlier. She was a tenant leader, election poll worker, and she found every person in need in the neighborhood and got them the assistance they were so desperately desiring. I also want to say that I vote yes on all, except 103A and 104A. Thank you very much.
Caban.
I vote no on 532A, 103A. Abstain on 104A. Aye on the rest.
Thank you. Carr.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I just want to make comments that I think will dovetail with the comments made earlier by our colleague from the North Shore, because in today's street co-naming bill, we are among several that we're doing in my district, designating Brielle Avenue at the entrance to the Sea View Campus in honor of the Black Angels. And the Sea View Campus was home to the city's tuberculosis hospital for many decades. And TB is documented as having caused the most deaths of any infectious disease in our history as a race, our history as a race, as a people, in this globe. And the reality is, is that there were very few places where folks could go for treatment and care. And the city, I guess, chose to exile these souls to the wilderness of Staten Island. But they had the most tremendous of care given to them by these women, including local heroes like Virginia Allen and Colleen Jennings-Bennett, who gave the best standard of care that could have been given at the time that they were serving there. And they did it at great personal risk, because this is one of the most infectious diseases that humanity has ever faced, and they did so with dignity. And they brought tremendous love and compassion to the people struggling with this illness and helped bring about the demise of TB as something that is endemic in our community. And so they are to be saluted. And I thank the Congresswoman Nicole Malliotakis for recommending this concept to me and very proud to be doing this street co-naming. With that said, I'll be voting no on Introduction 111A, and aye on the rest. Thank you.
De La Rosa.
Aye on all.
Dinowitz.
Aye on all.
Feliz.
I vote aye on all and wish everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year, everybody.
Thank you. Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez. Hanif.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. I vote aye on all, with the exception of Intro 103A and Intro 104A, on which I vote no. I'm going to lift up the co-naming of Samaya Spain in my district. Samaya was a 19-year-old woman who was a beloved member of the Wykow Gardens community. On March 17th of this year, she was killed in a local bodega after rejecting the advances of a young man. Every woman, everyone deserves to be safe in our city in every corner. Saying no is a fundamental right, and walking away should never be met with retaliation. Samaya's death, an act of femicide, has shaken our community and underscores the urgent need to root out gender-based violence. I want to thank her family and the Wykow Gardens Tenant Association for their partnership on this co-naming. Samaya is deeply missed in our community, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to honor her memory. Thank you.
Thank you. Hanks.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Today, I want to highlight the extraordinary leaders that we are choosing to honor with street co-namings, as my colleague, Councilmember Carr, said the Black Angels Way at Seaview Hospital is recognizing the incredible contributions of African-American nurses who played a vital role in curing tuberculosis. One of those is Ms. Virginia Allen, who helped deliver three of my four children. Youngest Hanks is here with us today. Additionally, we want to honor Sajda Amastehir Ladner from Universal Temple of the Arch, George Doyle, Geraldine Parker. These amazing Staten Islanders have made a lasting impact in our community and my district, particularly Geraldine Parker, who in particular holds a special place in my heart, where we met as she was a tenant leader, president for the Stapleton Houses until June of 2022 in her death. Her words continue to guide me at City Hall and remind me to live up to the ideals and values that these leaders embodied. These street co-namings are a testament to their legacies and their profound influence on myself, Staten Island, and beyond. Thank you.
Holden.
Aye on all, with the exception of Intro 111A, of which I vote no.
Hudson.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of Introductions 103 and 104, for which I vote no.
Councilmember Hanks.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of 111A. Thank you.
Thank you, my apologies. Joseph.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. This bill, Intro 265, ensures city employees maintain continuous health insurance when transferring between agencies and receive clear guidance on accessing benefits. This issue is personal to me. When I transitioned from being a public school teacher to a council member, I found myself without health insurance for months, right when I needed it for a routine checkup after my past open-heart surgery. This legislation addresses gaps like the one I faced, ensuring a seamless benefits transition to city employees. I urge my colleagues to vote yes and support the workers who keep our city running. Also, lastly, honor those who will be celebrating for our remarkable individuals from District 40 with the passage of today's street co-naming: Leroy Johnson Way, Ferdinand Valme Way, Justin Bunyan Way, and Justin T. Hathley Way. These individuals shape our communities with their advocacy and leadership. Co-naming these streets ensure their legacies live on. Thank you to my team, central staff, and community advocates who have made the introduction and passage of these bills today. I vote yes on all, except for Intro 103 and Intro 104. And I vote no.
Thank you. Krishnan.
Aye on all, except for Intro 104, for which I vote no.
Thank you. Lee.
Aye on all. Happy holidays. Congrats on all the street co-namings, and we wish you well, Councilmember Jaeger.
Lewis.
Aye on all, and congratulations to Councilmember now Assemblymember-elect Kalman Jaeger.
Mamorato.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of 111A. I vote no.
Marte.
I vote aye on all, except Intro 103A. Kalman, we'll miss you. Take care.
Thank you. Meili. Okay, we'll come back.
I vote aye on all, and just want to wish everyone a blessed holiday and never forget the reason for the season. Please look on some who do not have. Stop by, give people a plate, because you never know who is in need, even though they do not look like they need. Some of them do need. So, thank you, Madam Speaker. Have a nice holiday. And I already voted aye on all. Thank you.
Thank you. Menon.
Aye.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Narcisse.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the speaker, the greatest speaker that I knew, because that's the one I work with, to have a woman leadership. Yes, 34 women, and we passed so many bills. As I saw my colleagues were not clapping, I'm going to clap until end, because I love it, the fact that we have 34 women here, and we can work together. And for the men that get it, thank you. Today, I'm proud to introduce three street co-naming, honoring remarkable individuals who dedicated their lives to serving our communities and really embodying the values of compassion, caring, and hard work. One of them is Dorothy Toronto, and I had a pleasure to work with her as well. She's a trailblazer. She served as a district manager of our community board for 38 years, advocating in South Brooklyn. She served in the school buildings. She served in the community, name it, she was part of it. So, I'm so happy to be here to be able to do that. And I have Perry Codotis, from Greek, but he plays such an instrumental role in our community. He opened doors of his restaurant. By the way, he works his way from being a dishwasher assistant to a person that owned his own business in the community. And when he had that business, he opened the doors for everyone, the seniors every night. If you don't have a meal, you know you can go to that diner on the Austrian Avenue. So, I want to say thank you to my colleagues in advance that you're going to vote yes for that. And then I have to say thank you to my colleague, Frau Lewis, that helped me introduce this for Mari Cesar Way. This woman is a legacy that we... I mean, she plays such an instrumental role. And everyone that come from wherever you came from, if you don't have a meal, she get the meal for you. If you don't have a job, she looks for the job for you. She traveled the way with you. And she was, she's going to be missed. So, I'm going to conclude that to say thank you, madam. And I'm looking forward for my colleagues to support to say yes to those three names. And I vote yes, of course.
Councilmember, your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Narcisse. Nurse.
Love going after Councilmember Narcisse. I vote aye on all, except for 103A, 104, and 532A. Thank you.
Thank you. Osay.
I vote aye on all, with the exceptions of 103A, 104, and 532A. Thank you, and which I vote no.
Palladino.
Aye on all, except 1A. Thank you. Did I put too many ones in there? Okay, I'm good.
We got it.
One less. 1111A. There you go.
Thank you. Powers.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Wrestler.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Aye on all, with the exceptions of 103A and 104A, for which I vote no. I'd just firstly like to commend and thank Councilmember Hanif for recognizing Samaya Spain, who was killed tragically on the border of our districts this past year. She had an exceptionally bright light, and our community misses her dearly. And in Council District 33, we are renaming a street corner on McGinnis Boulevard and Bayard Street after Matthew Jensen, who was a beloved teacher at PS 110. Late one evening, walking home from his birthday party, he was killed by a speeding car on McGinnis Boulevard. And I can say truly, as much as we miss him dearly, his death has not been in vain. His loss galvanized the Greenpoint community, and we have spent the last five-plus years fighting and fighting and fighting to make McGinnis Boulevard safe. And right now, as we speak, the Department of Transportation is implementing the final components of the McGinnis Boulevard redesign, and that is truly in Matt Jensen's honor, and that is his legacy. So, we miss him greatly, and we look forward to honoring him properly at the corner of McGinnis and Bayard in the near future, and just thank my colleagues for their support of the street naming. Thank you.
Thank you. Riley.
Aye.
Thank you. Salam.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Good afternoon, everyone. Today, as we co-name the various street names of our city, I want to highlight one that is representative of our hip-hop culture. Today, we vote on the co-naming of the intersection of 109th Street and Fifth Avenue to honor a man whose voice became a global anthem for celebration, unity, and unapologetic joy. It's only right that we rename this corner Isaac Freeman III, aka Fat Man Scoop Way, in recognition of a cultural giant who represented the very heartbeat of Harlem, who was also a personal friend of mine. Fat Man Scoop was more than just a voice, he was an energy, a movement, a force that carried Harlem spirit to every arena and every stadium across the world. His voice commanded attention, not just because it was loud, but because it was powerful, undeniable, and rooted in authenticity. And that's Harlem. That's who we are. But beyond the music and the accolades, this moment is about legacy. This street sign will stand as a reminder to every child, every dreamer, every hustler walking these blocks, that you don't have to leave Harlem behind to be great. You can take Harlem with you and still win. So, today, we honor not just Fat Man Scoop's career, but his impact. We thank him for reminding us that our voices matter, that Harlem's creativity is limitless, and that no matter where we go in this world, we bring Harlem with us. And on that, I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Salamanca.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Shulman.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. First, I want to acknowledge that we have here today in chambers Rajbir Singh and Mohind Singh, who are here with us, representing the 114th Street Gudwara in Richmond Hill, which brings me to my first street co-naming at the corner of 114th Street and 101st Avenue as Guru Tek Bahadur Margji Way. Guru Tek Bahadur G, the ninth guru of Sikhism, was a poet, philosopher, and warrior whose teachings of love, compassion, and justice resonate deeply across generations. The Baba, Ma Khan, Shah, Lubana, Gudwara in South Richmond Hill stands as a testament to his enduring legacy, serving as a hub for spiritual growth and community development. This co-naming honors his spiritual leadership and contributions to the vibrant Sikh community in South Richmond Hill. Second is the co-naming of the corner of 117th Street and Merrill Avenue as Alfie's Way, in recognition of Alfeo Muto and the enduring legacy of Alfie's Pizzeria. For over 50 years, this beloved institution has been a cornerstone of South Richmond Hill, providing delicious food with a sense of family and belonging. Alfeo Muto was a philanthropist, a neighbor, and a friend to those in the community. From feeding first responders after 9/11 to helping anyone in need, his generosity and kindness embodied the best of our community. Today, his children carry forward his legacy, which will now live on with the street co-naming. Thank you. Aye on all, sorry.
Thank you. Stevens.
Aye on all, except 532A, 104A, and 103A, on which I vote no.
Thank you. Ung.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Vernikov.
No on 1111A, and aye on the rest. And Mazel Tov, Assemblymember-elect Kalman Jaeger, we will miss you.
Williams.
I would aye on all.
One.
I vote aye on all, except for 103A, 104A, and 532A.
Thank you. Jaeger.
May I be excused to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. I don't have to do that much longer. I appreciate it. Thought I'd maybe get up and make a motion, but it's probably not... Won't be that as entertaining to you as it is to me. Just want to rise briefly on Intro 532 and just speak about the genesis of it and the history, and my gratitude to Councilman Brennan for pushing this to the end, and to the speaker for making sure that this got passed today. This was an effort that began over a decade ago, when my very wise predecessor, Councilman David Greenfield, saw the need that was being unaddressed, which was that not every child in New York City was safe in their school and had that safety. The public schools have the school safety officers, but non-public schools had nothing. And every parent deserves to know that when their child goes to school, they're going to be safe. And every child deserves to have that peace of mind of walking into a building with a uniformed person in front who's there to keep them safe. This program is an incredible job producer as well. It requires that the wages be prevailing, which means that good union jobs. This was an effort that was done over the last couple of years to raise the level of conversation about this, because we've seen what's happened in other parts of this country, and thank God, thank God, not in New York. But having somebody stand in front of a school to protect those children is the most important, I think, thing that we can do, and I'm very grateful to the members of this body who are supporting this bill today. I vote aye on that. I vote aye on all, with the exception of Intro 1090 and Intro 1098. I'm sure you don't want my speech about bids, but bids are taxes. There you go. And on Intro... Campaign Finance, but on Intro 1111, I'm going to vote in favor of it, but I understand why my colleagues who are voting no are doing so, and it's because a number of years ago, this council increased, not in this session, increased the amount of public funds that would be spent on campaigns by hiking the expenditure limit that's necessarily tied to that amount, and therefore, it's going to cost taxpayers more. I will vote in favor of it simply because the expenditure limits do need to be raised every two years. And I thank you very much, Madam President.
Zhuang.
I vote aye, except Intro 111A. Will miss my colleague Kalman Jaeger here.
Thank you, Councilmember. Borelli.
I vote aye on all, except 111A, and want to extend a heartwell, warm wishes to all my colleagues for the holidays, and certainly wish best of luck to Kalman Jaeger, who, not always the most popular guy in this chamber, but oftentimes says things that need to be said and represents the interests of small groups of people around the city who don't often get a voice. So, good luck to you and keep doing that in Albany.
Farias.
I would aye on all.
Thank you. Speaker Adams.
Aye.
Okay. All items on today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of 50 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, with the exception of Introduction 103A, which was adopted by a vote of 35 in the affirmative, 15 in the negative, and zero abstentions; and Introduction 532A, which was adopted by a vote of 44 in the affirmative, 6 in the negative, and zero abstentions; and Introduction 111A, which was adopted by a vote of 41 in the affirmative, 9 in the negative, and zero abstentions; and Introduction 104A, which was adopted by a vote of 38 in the affirmative, 11 in the negative, and 1 abstention; and Introductions 1090A and 1098, which was adopted by a vote of 49 in the affirmative, 15 in the negative, and 1 abstention; and Introductions 1090A and 1098, which was adopted by a vote 1090A and 1098, which was adopted by a vote of 49 in the affirmative, 1 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. We will now move into introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committee as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. We will now move into the discussion of resolutions, seeing none signed up. We will now have a voice vote on today's resolutions. If you wish to vote against or abstain from any of today's resolutions, sorry, folks, give me one second. Okay. If you wish to vote against or abstain from any of today's resolutions, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email or by approaching the dais. I'll now read today's resolutions into the record. Resolution 11 calls on the United States Congress to pass and the President to sign H.R. 4052, the National Infrastructure Bank Act of 2023. Will all those in favor say aye? All opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 227A calls on Congress to pass and the President to sign a renewed foreign bill that increases funding for life-saving food aid. Will all those in favor say aye? All opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 468 calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the Governor to sign Senate Bill Number 5964 and Assembly Bill Number 8263, also known as the Empire State Licensing Act, which provides all New Yorkers with access to professional occupational, commercial, or business licenses, permits, certificates, or related registrations, regardless of an applicant's citizenship or immigration status, or lack thereof. Will all those in favor say aye? All opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 521 calls on the United States Department of Labor to expand the number of occupational safety and health administration authorized outreach trainers in New York City's 10 designated languages. Will all those in favor say aye? All opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 522 calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the Governor to sign Assembly Bill Number 10225 and Senate Bill Number 9376, also known as the Good Jobs Guarantee Act, which would establish certain workforce training programs and increase employment opportunities for New Yorkers. Will all those in favor say aye? All opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 576 calls on the New York State Legislature to introduce and pass and the Governor to sign legislation amending the tax law to authorize the City of New York to offer a tax credit for businesses to incentivize the creation of workforce development and training programs for newly arrived immigrants. Will all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We will now move into general discussion, and I would like to first call on Councilmember Hudson, followed by Carr, then Hanks.
Thank you so much, and good afternoon again. Today is a bittersweet day for me. My Chief of Staff, Casey Addison, is leaving the council at the end of this year, after three years as my Chief of Staff, and more than a decade in city government. Casey first joined the council, working in what was then the Policy and Innovation Division and Central Staff. She then became a policy analyst, staffing the committees on public safety and contracts. She's probably the only person I've met in my life who is a proud, self-proclaimed contracts nerd, although I'm sure Councilmember Brewer might be a close second. She then spent a few years working for public advocate Jomani Williams, running his legislation and policy shop during the pandemic, where she notably worked to pass the Racial Impact Study Bill that has fundamentally changed land use in our city. And much to his dismay, Casey then left his office when I asked her to become my Chief of Staff when I first entered the council. Casey is a brilliant, compassionate, hardworking, strategy-oriented leader, someone who has delivered every single day for the more than 170,000 New Yorkers who call District 35 their home. She deftly navigated an influx of nearly 3,000 newly arrived migrants in Clinton Hill to ensure they had culturally sensitive services, and she addressed quality-of-life issues that came from the sudden residential increase. And she kept my office running smoothly and efficiently when I went on parental leave last year. I'll never have the words to truly express my gratitude, but I hope you know that I couldn't have made it through these first three years without you. From the bottom of my heart, thank you, Casey.
Thank you, Casey. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Carr, followed by Jaeger, then Narcisse.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I just want to wish all colleagues a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy Holidays. May this time of year be nothing but the best, and I wish you nothing but good things for the coming new year. I want to just say a few words about our departing colleague and future Assemblyman, Kalman Jaeger. I first met Councilmember Jaeger when he joined this body as a member in 2018, and I was serving as Chief of Staff to my predecessor. But I only really got to know him well in the time that I joined this body as a member. And he is one of the smartest, fiercest, most fearless, and wise people that I've ever had the privilege of knowing in this business, and indeed, in life. He has probably forgotten more about government and politics than I could ever hope to learn. And he has been a stalwart figure for his community, and for the principles with which he believes. Sometimes, his own conservatism, I think, puts the Republican Conference to shame. He is a fantastic human being. He is a man of integrity. He is a man of conviction and character. And the only solace I have that he's leaving this body is that he will continue to serve the public as a member of the New York State Legislature. And he will be fighting for all New Yorkers, and in particular, the constituents I represent in Staten Island, and of course, my new adoptive home borough of Brooklyn, as Councilmember Wrestler never ceases to remind me. And I really wish Kalman only the best moving forward, because he will only be giving the best to all of us as he continues to represent us in his future capacity. So God bless you, my friend, and God bless your family, and may only good things come before you.
Councilmember Jaeger.
Best thing would probably just be not to follow that, and let those words stand, and be good enough. Thank you very much, Councilman, I appreciate those words very much. And so now the end is near, and I face my final curtain, as Frank said. You know, I think a lot about this building, and it's a building that I cherish since I was a little kid. And I was, my single digits used to come here, sit on the steps, and hope, have an ice cream while my father worked across the street, and hope that Mayor Koch would come out and say hi to me. And I came here to work here as a teenager for a freshman member to council, who learned as I learned, and taught me when Speaker Valone was the Speaker. And this is a building where giants walked, I talk about that all the time, before us, people who were far greater than we are, but who had great aspirations for what would come after them. This is the building where Fiorella LaGuardia ran the city. This is a building where my mentor, Fernando Ferreira, worked in this chamber, and in the chamber across the hall, in the Board of Estima Chamber. This is a building where Lou Fidler was in this room. There are names I'm not going to mention, there are so many others, but this is the place where it gets done for the people. And you know, and I'm sure people notice, I look at the ceiling a lot, I talked about President Lincoln last time, but you look at the seal of the city, and the seal that's on the ceiling, it has the Dutchman and the Native American looking at each other. It's not the same seal that you have on your business card. It's a seal that they're talking to each other. People who differ in opinion should be able to talk to each other, it's what I've always tried to do. And I appreciate that from time to time, I've had different opinions, possibly, from some members of this body. And although I'm shocked to find out that my popularity was in question, Minority Leader, we'll talk about that later. But I do believe that you should be able to talk to people who don't agree with you on 100% of the time. If you can find an ally on 20%, then that's your 20% ally, not your 80% enemy. And if you can find an ally on 80%, then that's your 80% ally and not your 20% enemy. You should find somebody and people who you can work with on every single thing, and there are members of this body, and I'm looking at them, who know that we have worked together on things that others may not know about, but we've done it together for the service of the people of New York.
Councilmember.
And I will wrap up very quickly, I will just remind the Chair, Madam Chair, that when Councilman Brandon, I'm sorry, when, when the gentleman who sat behind me left, he got six minutes, I'm not asking for the same thing. I will just be very brief, and I will wrap up. The, and then you don't have to do it anymore with me, so it'll be okay for everybody.
Doing okay for you.
The thoughts of what we are sent here to do, right? It's to stand up for our neighbors, that's what I have done. And I've done it in a way that I hope that they have found that they've gotten their money's worth. What we should be doing every single day is thinking about the 180,000 or so people who sent us here, and only them and nothing else. If you vote for your conviction, it doesn't, you don't have to agree with me, but vote how you feel in your head, the people who gave you that megaphone want you to act, you'll be okay, and you will every single time. And that's what I've tried to do, and I hope I've done it well. And as Frank said, the record shows, I took the blows, but I did it my way, and I appreciate
Recognizing Councilmember Narcisse, followed by Coban, then Aviles.
I want to say thank you. Thank you again to Madam Speaker for giving me the opportunity to serve in the capacity of Chair of a Hospital Committee. Now, we're coming to the end of the year, I am so appreciative to work with all of you. I cannot call one name in here that I say that I'm uncomfortable to work with, even though you can be in different sides, like my colleagues just mentioned. I don't know if you know my history, the reason I'm sitting here actually is because of Kalman Jaeger. When we go way back in South Brooklyn, we caused some good trouble, and he has changed somewhere along the way a little bit more conservative, but I want to say that we always agree to disagree on matters. And I want to say thank you to you. And I had the opportunity, not knowing that one day I was going to serve in the same council with you. And to all our friends that knew how we caused some trouble, but we're always respectful to each other. So I want to say thank you, happy holidays to everyone, but I have to mention someone that's very important and dear to South Brooklyn, Teri Cadet. She served with all her heart, and I remember, the reason I say thank you again to Madam Speaker is the sickle cell bill. I remember when I passed it, she suffered sickle cell disease, and she was saying so many thank you, and thank you to all my colleagues that make it possible. So today is a time to reflect, because we are at the end of the year. When we're coming back, who knows? I hope all of us, every one of us will come back, because you never know in life. But the year is end, we're going to end it with a special positive note, is respect with each other, and understand each other, care for each other, love for each other, and because you never know what the next second is going to bring. So happy holidays, whatever you celebrate, may God be with you, and thank you all, my colleagues.
Recognizing Councilmember Coban, followed by Aviles, then Holden.
Thank you. Today, I'm introducing legislation, Intro 1148, which would require DSS to provide receipts to applicants for any public benefits and services. These receipts would include information like the date of the application, what documents the applicant provided, whether the app is complete, and if not, what other information the applicant must supply. For years, our central agencies have been starved of the resources they need due to chronic underfunding and understaffing by this administration, leaving them ill-equipped to serve our constituents effectively. This very simple measure will ensure accountability, transparency, and peace of mind for New Yorkers who rely on these life-affirming benefits. These aren't just bureaucratic processes, they're lifelines for our neighbors who deserve to have their basic needs met, and it's our responsibility as a city to uphold the dignity of every applicant, and ensure they receive the respect that they deserve, and so I encourage my colleagues to sign on. I also wanted to say solidarity with the striking workers at Amazon in New York City and all of the boroughs. Amazon has proven itself to be an abusive and exploitative employer with a track record of serious labor violations. And after months of worker-led organizing and negotiations, Amazon refuses to come to the negotiating table in good faith. Today, the Amazon Teamsters took a historic step by striking and demanding what they deserve, a fair workplace and good-faith negotiations. I also want to say that in response to that bravery, the NYPD chose to defend Amazon's corporate greed instead of protecting working New Yorkers, and I condemn their use of the SRG and violence at the Amazon Teamsters picket line, where workers were peacefully and lawfully striking. The NYPD blocked the picket line, they threw punches at picketers, and they made violent arrests of protesting workers. I condemn both Amazon and the NYPD for denigrating the rights of workers under federal labor law to organize, strike, and collectively bargain in good faith, and again, solidarity to the workers.
Recognizing Councilmember Aviles, followed by Holden, then Palladino. Today, I'm introducing two pieces of legislation I hope you will all support. The first is a resolution calling on the President to take action on the collection of biometric data to harm and suppress people. This is especially important to address in the brief window of time before the next Trump presidency. We know that in 2020, during the first T-1 administration, he expanded the collection of biometric data for those seeking U.S. citizenship. Now emboldened with a promised shock, shock and awe approach to immigration policy, we can anticipate the worst with regards to broad and sweeping data collection that will not only put Americans at risk, but risk the violation of our constitutional rights. Secondly, I'm introducing a zero admissions port feasibility study. While New York City lags behind other port cities like Los Angeles on making bold and transformative changes that bring us closer to our climate goals, New York City now has a unique opportunity to reframe our thinking around port operations as we undergo planning work, such as at the site of the Brooklyn Marine Terminal. This once-in-a-generation project can and should be recreated as a green, zero-emission working waterfront that considers not only the land, but its people. We can have livable, breathable communities that generate dignified, productive employment for our community members. I encourage you all to sign on to Resolution 690 and Intro 1143, and I'd also like to mention standing in solidarity with the Amazon Teamster workers and all workers fighting for justice. Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Holden, followed by Palladino, then Riley.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and I just want to wish my colleague Kalman Jaeger Godspeed. Kalman was the first person, first Councilmember to call me when we got, when I got elected in '17. And I didn't know him, he didn't know me, but he called out of the blue, and he said, you know, you're kind of like me, but when you meet, we'll discuss things. But what I found out, that he knew the council, because I got the short orientation in the council. My race wasn't certified, because it was so close in '17. So I got the half-day orientation. And I missed out on a lot of things, but Kalman filled in the blanks on that over the years. But one thing I remember during Dem Conference, I was speaking about property tax interest, I thought it was fair, I said, oh, it's a good rate, whatever it was, 2%, and Kalman, of course, jumped in later on, after the Dem Conference, and said, you know, you shouldn't do that, it should be nothing, it should be half percent, whatever. And I changed my vote, or I changed my mind, well, that didn't sit well with leadership at that time. Remember Ramon? Ramon called me into his office, he was Chief of Staff to Corey Johnson, and he called me into the office, he says, you know, you got to tell me when you're going to change your vote. And I said, well, you know, I didn't know, I don't know all the ins and outs of this, but, he goes, what made you change your vote? I said, Kalman Jaeger. And somehow, somehow that triggered something, I don't know what went on before, but he says, if you continue to listen to Kalman Jaeger, you'll never get anywhere. Well, I didn't get anywhere, but I still listened to Kalman Jaeger, because he is, he really is a knowledgeable Councilmember, and we're going to miss him. And I don't know, that's going to be an empty chair for a while, but you're the best, man, really. Yeah, you're the truth. Thanks.
Get some tissues. I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Palladino, followed by Riley, then Brewer.
Well, I want to start off also, this is about Kalman. It's about us, it's about the time of year that it is, it's the time of reflection, and a time of coming together. I just want to say, Kalman, I too remember when I first got elected, and that was three years and 11 months ago. He is a unique, he is brilliant, he is articulate, he has been a friend, he has been a mentor, he's been a teacher, he's been there for just about everybody. And his common-sense, logical way of thinking, and his articulation at every single hearing that we have here, this meetings, the meetings that we have, just stunned and overwhelmed me sometimes. And you are going to be a void that's going to, I don't think, really, really be filled. So with that, I want to say to you, Kalman, I do remember our very first phone conversation, and I won't go into it here, but I do want to say to you, I love you, and I think that you have, you could teach us all a really good, a really good lesson. And thank you, thank you for allowing me to be part of your life for the last three years and 11 months. Thank you. Everybody, Merry Christmas, Happy
Intro 1156, which ensures fair wages and benefits for construction workers on city-funded projects. These workers are the foundation of our city, and they deserve a fair compensation. This bill promotes job stability, reduces income inequality, and strengthens our local economy by balancing economic growth with workforce needs, ensuring it benefits, excuse me, ensuring it benefits everyone equitably. I'm grateful to my colleagues and the NYC District Council of Carpenters for supporting prevailing wages. Let's do the work to make sure that this actually becomes reality. Second, I'm also introducing Reso 696, designating the Friday before Mother's Day as Community-Based Organization Day. CBOs provide essential services, childcare, social support, and casework for our most vulnerable residents. These nonprofits reflect our city's diversity and resilience. Yet, their workers face challenges like low pay, job stress, and high turnover rates. I'm proud to co-prime this resolution with Councilmember Williams and Stevens, and this resolution was inspired by one of my constituents, Reverend Dr. Kendricks, whose dedication to our community reminds us of the importance of honoring CBOs. CBO Day will celebrate these vital organizations citywide and amplify their voices. Thank you, and I urge your support for these measures to uplift those who build our city and care for our communities. And lastly, I would just like to say good luck to my colleague Kalman Jaeger. You've been a blessing. I remember coming in, and you sat behind me, and I did have a story similar to Holden at that time, but I won't take too much time to talk about that. But thank you, everyone.
Acknowledging Councilmember Brewer, followed by Ariola, then Salam.
Thank you very much. I'm talking about Intro 1145. It's a local law to require electric bicycles and electric scooters that are part of shared systems, like Citibank and Lime, to have speedometers and to limit electric speed assistance for new riders. How can we tell people to stay under certain speeds if they don't even know how fast they're going? The companies that run shared systems need to put speedometers on their devices, and people who are new to powered devices, like Tourist, should start slowly. This legislation says stay under 10 miles per hour on your first three electric bikes, rides. And I want to say to Councilmember Holden, I'm sure Ramon Martinez is listening. Thank you very much.
Recognizing Councilmember Ariola, followed by Salam, then Dinowitz.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I started off this session this year talking about Reso 5, so I want to just end this session with talking about Reso 5. I understand the concerns that my colleagues have. I want to thank the council staff and the colleagues that are on the Reso for their support. But Reso 5 is an equity bill. It is not a vaccine, anti-vax bill. And I'm going to continue to have conversations with all of my colleagues, so they can understand that this is a civil rights issue and not an entitlement issue. That being said, I want to say to my friend Kalman Jaeger that I am going to miss you dearly. And this time when I voted, I wanted to honor you by not voting for the SBS bills, but I couldn't. I wanted to honor you by not voting for the street renaming, but I wouldn't. So I just have to honor you by saying, I will pay forward everything that I have learned from you. Your generosity, your kindness, your knowledge, your willingness to help, your insane ability to sit at a table and not eat because it's not kosher, your love for your religion, and your love for the people that you serve. Thank you, Kalman, for being my friend. Thank you for always being our friend. We can always count on you, and thank you, because you're going to continue to be our friend. And do not leave the group chat. Wishing you all the best.
Councilmember Salam, followed by Dinowitz.
Thank you. You know, I was sitting here, and it occurred to me that there's a thing called Bring Your Child to Work Day. And I got the opportunity to have my mother be here with me today, and it's just an honor for her to be here. I also wanted to congratulate my Director of Budget and Legislative Affairs, Mufazal Hussain, for his offer of admission to Oxford University. Yes, indeed. Starting next October for a Master's in Sustainable Urban Development, he's still deliberating because he wants to figure out whether, you know, he can get the scholarship so he can attend. So I just want to, you know, congratulate him and encourage us to pray that all his dreams and aspirations come true. Thank you. Oh, and I would also like to say to Kalman Jaeger, it's been an honor. I see you, and I recognize the fact that you've been fighting. And what you said about 20%, 80%, I'm going to keep that, I like that. That's powerful. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Dinowitz, followed by Williams.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Kalman, I just want to say that I am so grateful to have gotten to serve with you. When I got to the City Council in the middle of 2021, I got in at a time when most members were full speed ahead on their way out the door. And you took the time then, as you do every day now, to sit with me and lend me an ear, be someone I can talk to, ask for advice. And although we often reach different conclusions, by the way, the Minority Leader's not here, but I think you're very popular, despite what he says. I know that when I speak to you, your advice, or your counsel, or everything you're saying is rooted in a value system and not rooted in what I think a lot of politicians get caught up in, which is outside forces, outside politics. I know you're someone who cares about your community, and by the way, knows and appreciates the Bronx, having worked there for so long, which I personally appreciate. And I'm certainly going to miss someone who cares so much about their values, about their community, and cares about the institution. And I know that you're moving, I'll say laterally, to the New York State House, but moving to another position. And although you won't be, we won't be serving together anymore, I'm certainly going to be calling on you for advice when I need it. And I hope you have a good time hanging out with and working with a different Dinowitz. So I wish you the best as you make your way over to the State House.
Recognizing Councilmember Williams, followed by Shulman.
Thank you. The Speaker always wishes everyone else a happy birthday, and it was just her birthday, so just happy birthday, Madam Speaker. And I just wanted to acknowledge that Lehman College is here. I know they are located in Councilmember Dinowitz's district, so shout out to my CUNY fam. Faculty is here, and I know some students, Maurice, Mason, Monique, Will Mary, and Sarah. Thank you for joining us, if you're still here. A lot of students and faculty are really excited about engaging with the council, so anytime they ask, I always say, sure, you're welcome. So thank you for being here, and look forward to having more students come and see what we do in the council. And happy holidays, everybody.
Councilmember Shulman.
Yes, I wanted to, I can't see my back as to him, but I wanted to say goodbye to, I'm not good at goodbyes, and I just want to say, when I first joined the council, that Kalman Jaeger was one of the first people to welcome me with open arms, literally and figuratively. And I want to thank him for that and for everything that he has helped me with, and he's helped me with a lot of things, especially since I have an Orthodox constituency, and was very helpful with that. And I just want to end it by saying, there's a, for those who are old enough to remember, and it's not most of the people in here, but there is a comedy group called the Mox Brothers from the 1930s, and they were very famous. And one of the famous lines from them was, hello, I must be going. So Kalman, I know you're saying, hello, you must be going, and I hope that we stay in touch. Thank you.
Thank you, seeing no one else signed up to speak. And I also want to thank Councilmember Riley and Williams for remembering to acknowledge the Speaker on the floor for her birthday. And this was my last Madam President from Kalman Jaeger, so thank you so much, and good luck in the Assembly. And with that, I'll now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close today's stated meeting.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Happy holidays, colleagues. The stated meeting of December 19, 2024, is hereby adjourned.
BLAC members, there's a meeting in the committee room. BLAC.